It is loading. All right, we're up and running.
Welcome to the Monday, December 6th, 2021 meeting of the Ventura County Aviation Advisory Commission. It's a little bit after seven. We'll start the the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Shift to that first slide there, Mr. Naffey.
Yes.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you. Roll call.
Chair Robert Trimborn.
Here.
Vice Chair James Flickinger. Gary Jacobs has been excused, Maggie Bird. Audrina von der Graff.
Here.
Nanette Metz has been excused, Bobby Williams.
Here.
And Bruce Hamus is having trouble logging on, so I will work with him on the back end, but he will be joining me shortly. Steve Weiss.
Here.
Steve Tannenhill.
Here.
You have a quorum with six commissioners.
Thank you. Next item is the agenda review. Any comments from the commissioners regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of November 1st, 2021 regular meeting and November 15th, 2021 special meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
I so move. Maggie.
For a second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Eric Trimborn.
Yes.
Maggie Bird.
Yes.
Audrina von der Graff.
Yes.
Bobby Williams.
Aye.
Steve Weiss.
Aye for November 1 abstention for November 15th, since I wasn't at that meeting.
And Steve Tannenhill.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously for the minutes of November 1st and also unanimously with one extension for the minutes of November.
Thank you, Anna. Next item is public comment. Anna, do you want to announce how they do public comment?
Yes, please. If you would like to be added to the public comment queue, please be connected via Zoom. If not already connected and wish to make a public comment, you can find the Zoom link on the last page of the meeting agenda. If you wish to make a public comment on agenda item number five, please press the raise hand button now, or if you're calling in today, press star then nine to be added to the speaker queue. And I do have some comments that we received that I can read into the record if you'd like.
Go ahead, Hannah, proceed.
The first comment is from David Cronshaw. Since the new noise abatement procedures were published on the new VCAirports.org website, we are seeing some touch and goes that are flying in accordance to the procedures. However, a substantial number are not. Training flights are expected to stay on or north of Woolley and east of the canal unless extended by the tower for safety reasons. From November 6th through November 31st, there were 192 Oxnard Airport noise abatement violations from local and Los Angeles flight schools, clubs and individuals. These 192 violations were for only 20 days in November due to weather and five days of closure. Three local flight schools are blatantly ignoring the updated procedures and flying way south of West Woolley Road and turning over Oxnard Shores. There has also been a marked increase in Santa Monica and Van Nuys flight training on weekends, likely due to their own airport training restrictions. Santa Monica's municipal code states, touch and go, stop and go, and low approach, low approaches are prohibited on weekends and holidays. Violators may be fined and or excluded from Santa Monica Airport. Schools continue to be unaware or unwilling to follow the procedures. Questions, what is the Department of Airports doing to make sure these guidelines are communicated to all using Oxford Airport for touch and goes? Why can't the residents of Oxnard be provided with a similar period of rest from touch and goes that Santa Monica Airport and other LA airports have? Why is it that residents have to monitor this training traffic and report it to the Department of Airports? And that concludes the end of the comment from David Cronshaw. The next comment is from Alan Glenn. His comment reads, Dear Airport Commission, I have lived at the Channel Island Harbor for the last several years. The airport never seemed to be a problem until the pandemic started. It is my understanding that several flight schools moved into the area and we have been subject to numerous touching go flights daily. These flights have dramatically degraded our safety and quality of life and can no longer be tolerated. The community has tried to be good neighbors by working with the airport authority to cause changes that would make the situation tolerable. However, since the enactment of the Oxnard voluntary noise abatement program on November 1st, 2021, we have seen no improvement. The touch and go flights create the following safety and noise issues for the residents southwest of the airport. Number one, the touch and go planes are older and very loud, often being measured at above 75 dBA at the ground level. Number two, the flights often cross over residents between 600 and 900 feet, well below required 1,000 feet. Number three, the flights routinely fly over or south of Harbor Island, well south of the adopted flight pattern to stay north of Woolley Road and east of the Edison Canal. Number four, these planes have a very high crash rate compared to more modern aircraft. Number five, these planes use leaded gasoline, which deposit lead in the harbor and over three elementary schools. Immediate changes that must be considered for adoption by the airport commission. Number one, adopt the right turn north as the primary pattern for touch and go flights as seen and exhibited below. That concludes the 250 word limit, but all commissioners were provided with Mr. Glenn's full comment. The next comment is from Jean Pierre Pozella. His comment reads, thank you for the opportunities to submit my thoughts on the subject matter. I will say that there has been some improvement regarding flyovers since the airport reopened. I can watch for my house, right traffic patterns and aircraft staying while east of the Edison Canal. So we know that this possible and is not too much of a burden on aircraft operators. However, I must also say that the improvements are not remarkable. For one example, I have attached a photo of an aircraft at low attitude directly over our home this last Sunday morning at about 10:00 AM. What prompted me to go up on our rooftop deck to take this photo is the fact that there were three aircraft flying a left pattern at low altitude directly over Oxnard Shores, one with his identity blocked. One of our group members asked me to see if I could photograph his tail number. I got the tail numbers of all three, relayed them to our group member, and the three aircraft operators were reported. This is the crux of the problem. Our group are simply concerned members of the public. We should not be burdened with policing aircraft operators that are violating the voluntary flight restrictions that have been agreed. Airport staff are quick to remind us when calling in complaints that the restrictions are in fact voluntary. I feel that they and the airport control tower should be equally august in making it very clear to aircraft operators and their owners what the terms and conditions are for using our airspace. That concludes the 250 point limit, but a copy of this comment in entirety was submitted to all commissioners. There are no more written public comments.
Thank you, Anna. Are there any comments or public comment?
Oh, I, I do have a couple hands raised among the attendees, so let me promote Ben Di Benedetto and we'll get him loaded up here. Mr. Di Benedetto, are you online here? You can unmute. What's your ready to go? We'll give you three minutes.
Okay, should be unmuted.
All right, I hear you, so.
Good.
Fire away.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their time and their efforts on this ongoing problem. There has been some slight improvement with right turn traffic as opposed to violate the voluntary noise abatement situation. We do have a problem with a number of aircraft at this point blocking their tail numbers, so we can record the flight and the time and, but other than that, if they're not over our house, we can't see them and we don't know who they are. We've had a number of low flying aircraft. There was an aircraft the other day. It's on our list that we turned in. That was an altitude, a low altitude of 100 feet over the sand, going to 200 feet over the sand and then finally getting up into a normal pattern of over 1,000 feet after he went from Fifth to basically Hollywood Beach. My main problem right now is I'm not clear on how many flight schools there are. According to our records, there, last year when we started this in January, there was four to six flight schools. Now I'm seeing as many as eight and 10 flight schools. Sometimes we have three planes flying touch and go patterns at the same time, sometimes up to five planes flying touch and go at the same time. So we have an ongoing problem and it's difficult for all of us to get our arms around. And I think I may be ignorant on this situation, but I would suggest a coordinated meeting with the county executive, the board of supervisors, the airport director, the flight schools, the neighborhood councils and the city officials. And until we, in my opinion, coordinate that kind of activity and include the neighborhood so that we can all get organized and agree on what is the best path for us to take, we're not really going to get anywhere. And the way things are going now, some people have information, some people don't have information. It's very confusing. So I'd like to see a coordinated effort with all of those entities. Also, I'd like to limit the number of flight schools that can utilize our airspace. I don't think anybody wants any, certainly any more than we have now. And I don't know how many the commission would think are too many or the but I do think that we need to take a look at that. Other than that, I think that's pretty much where I was going with it. Again, the most important thing for me is to get some coordinated meetings with all entities involved so that we can map out a way for all of us to succeed. We're not trying to close down the airport. And many of us are not opposed to some kind of commercial traffic. Because in my opinion, commercial traffic or quieter jets, we wouldn't have as much flight school traffic as we have. The flight schools are killing us. So please let's organize meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Naffey, you're muted, Dave.
All right, five year penalty for for that. And I will do Walter. Stand by, I'll promote him to panelist, take a couple of seconds to connect up and then he can come off mute. Stop this from flashing.
Okay, are you ready?
Bruce, are you on board? Oh, yeah. Sorry, Walter. You have three minutes. Fire away.
Thank you. I'm Walter Haggett. I'm Chair of the Oxnard Shores Neighborhood Council. Over a year ago, our group of residents, along with the three neighborhood councils, requested that the airport management work to reduce the number of aircraft overflying our community while performing touch and go training. We pointed out that this activity presented a safety and noise problem and that a solution could be found in asking the flight school pilots to request a right traffic pattern that would take the planes over agricultural land and avoid residential neighborhoods. This would be safer for the neighborhood and the pilots is consistent with all operational rules of the airport and has been and has been used before. After many months of discussion and meetings, we had hoped that by now we would have made progress. The closure of the airport for repair, a change in management and promises of new noise abatement guidelines has not produced the desired outcome. Since the airport, there have been some reductions in over flights. We have logged over 100 violations of rules and there are only partial, that's only a partial. It is disappointing that the new guidelines look a lot like the old ones and do not even mention the possibility of requesting right traffic to avoid our neighbor mates. We have been invited, meeting on December 16th, to discuss the noise and safety issues at the airport, which we hope that this will include all of those involved in making these decisions. With yet another deadly small plane crash into Larry on Saturday, we hope that you will encourage the airport management to revise these noise and safety guidelines to include the option of right traffic to get the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're muted again, Dave.
I don't have any other attendees. Was there hands raised, so?
You're still muted if you're trying to talk, Dave.
You would have only heard me mumble to myself. So, okay, we're on with that and we get to the proper. It is a one man band here, so, okay, new business.
Thank you. So item six is new business. Item six, a subject approval and award of design services contract to J Aviation and Wolfport Company in a not to exceed amount of $395,775 for the repackage and design of select elements for the connector taxiways AHE reconstruction at Oxnard Airport. Authorization for Director of Airports or designated to execute the subject contract. Mr. Director or Dave?
Bob, this is Keith. I only have one correction. It was 393,775 or one correction. And from there I will kick it to Aaron to give a brief, some background on, on the project and contract.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chair Trimborn, Commission members. Staff is requesting that your commission recommend the Board of Supervisors approve and awarded a design services contract with J Aviation for the connector taxiways reconstruction at Oxnard Airport and also authorize the director or designate to execute the contract. To provide some background, this project was previously bid as a component of the 2021 runway reconstruction project that we're just wrapping up. But it was not awarded due to FAA funding availability. The package is being re, I'm sorry, the project is being repackaged and require some adjustments to the design to allow for phasing of the construction to minimize closure of the runway because the original design contemplated a full runway closure for this work to move forward under the runway project. We are working to design the project so that any work that requiring a runway closure will occur only during the evening hours to allow the runway to be open seven days a week. The construction limits for the project are going to, we have a diagram up. Thank you very much, Dave. Will be from the edge of runway, the south edge of runway down for each connector taxiway down to Foxtrot, including a transition area onto Foxtrot. The contract before you is eligible for federal funding and as, as well as a Caltrans match. We are asking for approval on a not to exceed amount while we finish negotiations for the contract. So the amount before you is expected to be a maximum, but maybe less. The reason why we are bringing this to you without having completed this process is that the FAA has a very aggressive schedule to get this project repackage and back out for bid. They have actually asked us to get this out there as soon as possible. So we are looking to bring this out in January to go out to bid with bids anticipated possibly in February. And due to the schedule for getting a contract of this amount, which is over 200,000 approved, it requires board approval and we are looking to be able to move forward without sliding back on that, that schedule so we can maximize potential funding with the FAA. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that there may be.
Are there any questions or clarification questions for Aaron? From the commission?
I, I do, Bob. I don't know if anybody else want to jump ahead.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Thank you so much, Aaron. So I do have a, a number of questions. So it did not get approved before because the FAA did not have the money. But now we're saying the FAA will have the money. What, what, what changed to make that possible?
So Commissioner, each year the FAA is, we work closely with the FAA, but there's no guarantee of funding. A lot of it, there's a lot of moving parts. Even for the FAA, they may program a certain amount, but they don't actually have certainty of the amount of funds available until almost a grant award. And so we actually worked with the FAA on the runway project to put together a project that made sense that the FAA was supportive of us going out with a base bid and bid alternates to allow that if funding was available, we can move forward because there actually is a savings when we package the, if we had packaged the runway, the taxiway connectors and taxiway Foxtrot together. But sometimes there are funding constraints and we are not always aware of how that will work out until the grant, the grant offer.
So I guess what I'm hearing is they didn't have the money before, but they're urging us to go out again. And perhaps this time around, they will have funding for this.
Correct. So they are, they believe that they're, they, they have a certain amount of funding. Now, we, we don't control what the bid prices will be, so that will also be a factor. That will, you know, is once we, the grant will be in part based on construction bids. So all of that information, once we go out to bid, we will supply that to the FAA and then they will share with us what the funding availability will be.
Okay. So Erin, thank you for that. So is I, so we have a, a cost, a contract here for just under $400,000 and that's just to put the bid out, correct? That's just, that's no construction. That's just the process of preparing the bid?
Yes. So what they are doing is we have a design for the construction. They have to repackage it to put it back out on the streets as a, as a solo project. And they also do need to make some adjustments for a couple of things. One of them being that the work was anticipated to go forward simultaneously with the runway work. And so the schedule is changed and that phasing has to be reflected now in the plans and the construction documents. Additionally, there were some some conditions on site during the runway project that we need to make a, some, a few small select design changes to some of the design sheets for the, you know, lessons learned, being that there's some, some additional soil conditions that we can make sure and capture in our, we were fortunate, ended up being a zero change, zero sum change order during the runway project. But if we go ahead and make sure we make those adjustments now, when we go to do the taxiways, understanding we're going to see the same type of mix of soil, we can make sure we're not fight, you know, facing another change or with a potential cost.
And then in the financials, I see again this, I guess, 393,775 for direct costs. And then below that next page, there's a total fiscal impact that now includes this repackage and redesign. And it totals to an airport enterprise fund cost of 565,524. Is that what, is that in line with the original or is that cost now? You know, three, in effect, is it now $394,000 greater because we now have a $394,000 additional repackaging effort?
Sure. If we didn't, it, it is more now because if we didn't need to repackage it, this cost would never, we wouldn't be facing that.
Right. Um, and, and so now we're looking at cost of the fund of 565,000. Is that what? Does any, do you recall what it was before when we went out to bid? Was it at a similar level? Cause I know most of this is paid for by the FAA and Caltrans.
Uh, yeah. So the FAA has a 90% funding formula with a Caltrans 5% match of the federal dollars. It usually leaves the airport to pay about five and a half percent of the total project cost. The, the, the total price for the, the estimate for all in project has increased. Part of that is that our construction estimating has gone up over what the construction estimate was when we initially went out to bid. And we adjusted our pricing based on the actual bids that we received back in April of this year with the pandemic and some, and also demand and supply shortages. We have seen across industry that prices for any construction has gone up. And so what you're seeing is an actual, you know, we update, we update our project costs to reflect what we believe we're actually going to see when we go out to bid.
Well, and I, I ask on the finances because I know we, our budget for this year for Oxnard was to lose $1.6 billion. And while we had positive revenues out of Camarillo, they weren't sufficient to offset that. So the two airports together were budgeted to lose money. Does this increase that $1.6 billion and if so, by how much?
I don't think I'm comfortable speaking to, to the budget and that fiscal premise. But, you know, we do operate, you know, we do have two, two airports. We operate as a system and with, you know, with one overall budget. So one thing I would note is that we were really fortunate that in our 2021 grant for the runway reconstruction at Oxnard Airport, the FAA actually ended up stepping up and paying 100% of the project cost. So for that portion, which was substantial, it was a $14.4 million grant. The airport didn't end up putting up any match. And so I don't believe that an, you know, that what we're seeing here would, would end up putting us in the red because we actually saw a, a bonus in that we didn't have to get, do our match for the runway reconstruction.
Erin, Steve, if I can chime in, you know, anything deficits that we have, Steve, would, would just come from our reserves, the enterprise fund reserves, particularly for large projects, capital projects like this, that's typical for an airport system like ours. So I'll just add that.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Erin. Yeah, it does, you know, I realize my training may be different, but yeah, when I see an operation that's budgeted to lose money consistently, I get concerned because we have to make it up somewhere. In the past, we've made it up with Camarillo, but this year, if I remember correctly, we're not going to make it up with Camarillo. The entire system is, is budgeted to lose money. So it is a concern of mine, but thank you for your answers, Erin, and that answers my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Tannahill. Any other questions of clarification for staff?
I have just a quick one. Bob, it's Bobby. Erin, is, is this the time that you're going to redesign the high-speed taxiway delta that we talked about maybe in the beginning of this? Is, is that part of the issue that's going to be dealt with in this reconstruction?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. As when we, when we reconstruct the taxiway connectors, part of the federal requirements are that we need to bring up our taxiway connectors to federal design standards. And what that will require for our connector taxiways is that we have a couple, in particular, Charlie and Delta that are, you know, wider than standards and are, have a bit more of an angle because the FAA design standards like to see a 90 degree. Now, we did work, you know, that we, we worked to retain a high-speed exit on Delta so that our plan is to continue to have a high-speed exit on Delta. But you will see that the taxiway itself will be narrowed down to the standard width, which will meet safety standards as well.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions of clarifications? Hearing none, I will go to the public comment. Do we have any members of the public to comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, I do not see anybody with their hands raised among the attendees. Oh, Anna needs to make the announcement. Stand by.
Go ahead, Anna.
If you would like to be added to the public comment queue, please reconnect via Zoom. If not already connected and wish to make a public comment, you can find the Zoom link on the last page of the meeting agenda. If you wish to make a public comment on agenda item number 6A, please press the raise hand button now, or if you're calling in today, press star then nine to be added to the speaker queue.
Do we have any members of the public for comment?
Nobody with their hands raised yet.
Well, close the public comment period on this item and entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I saw move, I saw move, Steve Weiss.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second, Maggie.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Anna.
Chair Trimbley?
Hi.
Maggie Bird?
Yes.
Adriana von der Graff?
Yes.
Bobby Williams? Bruce Hemus?
Yes.
Steve Weiss?
Hi.
Steve Tannenhill?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Anna. Next is item 6B, adoption of resolution number four, authorized remote teleconference meetings of the aviation advisory commission for a 30-day period. Mr. Director.
I will, a quick background, this commission has adopted a similar resolution last few meetings. You'll need to do so if the commission decides they would want to have a teleconference meeting for the January meeting. They need to go through and adopt this resolution if commission so desires. So I'll kick it back to the chair.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments or questions of staff?
Yes, I have a comment. I think this whole thing is absurd. This, this assembly bill went into effect on January 1st. We've been totally transparent since the get-go. And all of a sudden, we need to pass these continuing resolutions. And we're not doing anything differently. And I think we need to have the, our representatives from the county speak to the powers that be on the assembly to this kind of, this kind of waste of time and, and money. I brought it up before, I'll bring it up again. And we're not bound by county council. County council does not represent the commission. They represent the Department of Airports. So it's up to our commission to act in a sound way and what makes sense. And as I say, we noticed the community from the get-go with these Zoom meetings. We've been in complete compliance under the Brown Act. And this is just some nonsense on my part. That's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. I have a couple of comments. I, I've heard that Santa Barbara, the city council actually passes this resolution that covers all their boards and commissions so that each one of them don't have to pass it. So I request that the staff explore that to see if we can do that for this county.
Chair, Trenton Boren, may I say that I just handed a copy before this meeting started of where I came from, Contra Costa County did the same thing. And we are, we will, starting tomorrow, explore if that's an option for this commission as well.
Thank you. And another item, it might not be germane to this issue, but if we had a consent calendar that would cover these ministerial items, it might be easier to handle instead of having to go through this over and over again. So we just passed the consent calendar and then the commissioners would pull an item off if so, if so needed for discussion. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to pass the staff recommendation. For a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Yes, and for clarification, I didn't catch who did the second. Thank you very much. Well, Chair Trimbley?
Hi.
Maggie Bird?
Yes.
Adriana von der Graff?
Yes.
Bobby Williams?
Hi.
Bruce Hemus?
Hi.
Steve Weiss?
Hi.
Steve Tannenhill?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is the director's report.
Thank you, Chair. I had three items. I want to go through the first item. I'm actually going to kick to Dave regarding our, our monthly noise report statistics. He has an update. We, we missed the cutoff to put them in the packet, but I want to make sure he gives you the actual statistics for the past month and we'll ensure to include those, the full statistics in the next month's packet. So Dave, take it away, please.
Mr. Chair, I have the numbers that I think were going to be most interesting month to month, and that would be the, the hangers and the complaints. And I have both of those for, for October. And I could just read those out. For Camarillo Airport, we had 16,734 operations. It's both takeoffs and landings together. And, and that was for the month of October. And for Oxnard, a staggeringly low number of 269, which, which is quite a bit below its average, but that's because the runway was largely under construction. And for October, the noise complaints for Camarillo, we had 20. And for October, noise complaints at Oxnard were zero. Again, because the runway was closed. So that's, that's normally what we would have been putting out for, for our report. We're covering the month of October. November's data set is incomplete at this moment. It's still being compiled and some of the information that we use to generate the report comes from FAA, which we have researched. If anybody has any questions about other elements that they're used to seeing in the, on the, oh, I meant to talk about the hangers. Let me, let me go back to that. For Camarillo, the number of hangers available, county hangers available is zero. Then the number of people on the waiting list is currently at six, so pretty small. And at Oxnard, we have six available and zero on the waiting list. So you can call us and we'll get you into a hangar right away.
Hey, Dave?
Go ahead, Mr. Tannahill.
Dave, in addition to that, you will give us aircraft incidents. Do you have that for October? And if not, you can get it, you know, at a later date.
Let me. Yeah, the official is going to come out. Let's see. Incidents, current months for Camarillo was nine. And that's inclusive of things like aircraft that have, you know, like a flat tire or such. So, so nine, but none of those was serious. And at, at Oxnard, we had zero for the month of October.
May I ask a question? For the reports going forward, since, you know, there seems to be such a concern about flight schools and touch and goes and so forth, which of course, you know, is definitely something we need to keep an eye on. Is there a way of differentiating in the statistic number of landings that are done by flight schools as opposed to non-flight schools? Like, so that we can really see what the difference is, if there is a difference?
Perhaps, and then we can identify which flight school it is? Would that be possible, Dave? Just a minute, Steve. Would that be possible, Dave? So that we could actually have some statistics because, you know, I, you know, we're getting numbers about how many planes with this and how many planes with that. But, you know, my, you know, I've spent my life doing data and statistics and so forth. And I like to have reports verified from more than one, you know, more than one source. So I'd be really interested to know where are these touch and goes coming from and who's doing them? Maggie, what do you think?
I completely agree. Yeah, I think we need to know what's going on, not just that it's happening, but if we can find the source, then we can figure out how to handle a problem if there is one.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Tannahill?
I completely agree as well. I think that's a great idea, Adriana. And, and the only piece I would add is it's touch and goes broadly stated. The people who are tracking that, their, their records show that roughly 40% of the problems come from four flight schools. Two in Camarillo, one in Santa Paula, and one in Oxnard.
But what I'd like to make, you know, is that you have people tracking that. I'd like to see the airport tracking that.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Again, I'm not disagreeing at all. I agree 100%. The point I'm trying to make or what I'm trying to add to the discussion is that it's not just flight schools. So Dave, if you can get us touch and goes, and, and yeah, from that total drill down into flight schools or whatever you can from Santa Monica, the more information we have, the better capable we are of understanding the situation and making a decision.
I'd like, excuse me, just one second. So this, this item isn't really on the agenda for action. So I'd request that the staff come back at the next meeting addressing this issue if possible at the next appropriate time to discuss potential changes in the way that data is presented to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Trimbley.
Yeah, so this is, this is not on the agenda for discussion, to be honest with you.
That's appreciated.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Getting back to the, the touch and goes are one thing, something that certainly, I think, everyone's trying to address and, and, and come to a suitable solution. But in some of the, the comments I heard went further than that about commercial traffic at Al. And I don't know how, I, I've lived in this county for over 40 years in Hollywood Beach. And I want to remind folks that haven't been here that long. We, we have four, three plus carriers operating out of Oxnard Airport. And you could set your watch early morning of when those flights took off, just when they started their engines. And that's in our master plan. So let's not lose sight of, of what we're there for. I, I think many of these folks have no idea what it's, what it's like to live here with having a number of carriers operating out of Oxnard Airport. And that's what our airport's for, at least Oxnard Airport. So, you know, let's not be wishy-washy about what the airport is for, and let's set the record straight. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Any other comments from the commission?
I would just add, as the commissioner representing that area, as does Stephen, you know, 100%. You know, there are, there are lots of voices out there, but the voices of the people who are trying to solve a problem are bending over backwards to say the problem is touch and goes, period, the end. Commercial flights would be welcome. So to Commissioner Weiss's concerns, are you going to find individuals who'd like to shut it down? Sure, you will. But none of those are in this group and none of those are part of this discussion. If people come to the group with that mindset, they're not invited into the group. The group is focused on one issue, one issue only, touch and go flights coming west of the canal, south of Woolley, over flying homes.
Thank you, Commissioner Tannahill. Any other questions or comments of the commission? Are we done with the director's report, Mr. Director?
Yeah, back to the, back to the director.
Yeah, no, I had a couple more items. I did want to recognize the airport staff, particularly Erin. With the Oxnard reopening November 12th, we got, Dave's got some photos for the ribbon cutting. About 75 folks showed up for that. I think Erin has mentioned in the past, it was, you know, a $14 million plus project. I think Aaron has mentioned in the past, it was uh, you know, a fourteen million dollar plus project. One of the largest uh for the airports department ever. Um, fabulous work done on time, on budget. And um, had a good event that day, so did want to recognize staff, particularly Aaron for her work in uh. Seeing the two, two and a half years worth of work from beginning to end. And then I wanted to move to, and and uh, a lot of the folks uh have stolen my thunder. Um, the airport team has put together, and I know that uh folks have been working a long time. Uh, Mr. Tannehill, Mr. uh, Heggendom, uh, many others in in noise issues. And uh, so we have set for next week. Uh, basically a noise forum, very specific group that has community members. Uh, you know, from Oxnard Shores, Channel Island, and Via Maria. Uh, invited the air traffic control folks, uh, we have a conference call with air traffic. Control regional folks tomorrow, uh, and we've invited uh local elected officials. And also um, some of the flight school operators. And basically, this forum is going to help the airport staff clearly identify what the issues are. And many of the things that that you all have just mentioned is logically go after what it is. And what's the most effective and efficient way of things we can do to incorporate into our, you know, flight nor neighborly program. So uh, I know a lot of the folks have been working a long time on that. The airports have been here for, you know, eighty-plus years, this is not a new issue, but, you know, things change and evolve. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna spend the, you know, better part of a couple hours of defining with the experts. What they're experiencing and the experts, air traffic control, flight schools, um, helping us quantify what what we're going to go after. So that's happening next week. It won't be the first or last meeting per se, uh, but should have a pretty good start. The uh, community members have a, Steve, help me out, I think you have nine items you really want us to to dive into. Uh, we have a few of our own, um, that that they haven't brought up, we think will be helpful. Um, and uh, we're expecting air traffic control and uh some of the flight schools might have some additional items. Uh, but we'll kind of bring that list together, and obviously, we will continue to report through this committee of of our findings as we progress. And and that's all I have. Any questions?
I just have one question, will it be a virtual meeting or is it in person?
Uh, no, this is again, very select few, we're shooting for about fifteen, it's in person. Um, and we've got some mockups and layouts and things like that that we're gonna, we're gonna do, so. Uh, this, this isn't a forum to, you know, highlight what the issues are, we kind of know what those are, but we wanted the elect, you know, the. The leaders of those uh entities to be there and make sure we're not missing anything, so. That's kind of what it is.
Thank you, Keith, for that information. Any questions, Keith, before we move on?
Just real quick, thank you for doing that, Keith, I think the community is excited. Uh, there were eight requests that were presented to this commission way back when. And you actually have met two of them with the new noise abatement guidelines. Which is when your flying left traffic, go east of the canal and north, or no, don't go south of Woolley. And let everybody know about it, so two of the eight, it's now a matter of getting people to follow it. So anyway, we're twenty-five percent of the way there, thank you, Dave, thank you, Keith, and hopefully we can get the rest of the way there before, before Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Tannehill. Uh, any other questions to the director before we move on? Hearing none, uh, item eight is the uh review and file the reports.
Receive and file.
Thank you. Which leads us to correspondence. We have a, a couple, pressure, a press release and a memorandum dated November seventeenth. From uh, President Harry, to the camera of airport tenants, whole mechanics and airplane repairs. Any uh comments? Hearing none, well, receive and file. Uh, brings us to item ten, commission comments, any comments from the commission before we adjourn the meeting? Yes, Mr. Tannehill.
Sorry, um, Dave and and Keith, how would you have the community deal with planes that have blocked their tail numbers? How, how would you, what should they do to register a complaint if a plane has blocked its tail number?
Yeah, Steve, I don't know if Dave has a great idea, I don't have any specific, um, you know, that's one of the things we're looking at. In our options for tracking airplanes, now there's some new technology. Uh, Dave's been researching um last few months. Um, so we're looking to see if there's other ways of getting that information other than, as you mentioned digitally. Because I don't know it, uh, it's, you know, it's allowed by the FAA to block if you want to do that. Not an easy way around that, uh, but we, we might have some other options, and that's kind of what we're researching now. Dave, I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, I mean, without having this on the agenda, it's hard to go too deep on this, but um, one of the, one of the technical things that we're looking at is. Uh, is with a vendor that would have uh access to it on filter.
Point of order, point of order, I think this is commissioner comments, not a question and answer period.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss.
I I am, I have one more comment, I guess, for the group, and I'll just throw it out, it doesn't need a response, but. Um, it would help me, and I I just want to throw out the idea, it may not work, but to get our material out a little quicker. Uh, I believe the Brown Act is a seventy-two hour notice requirement. And we're getting stuff out seventy-four hours, uh, which meets the Brown Act, but um. Anyway, I just would, it would help me and maybe help the community if stuff was available a little sooner uh ahead of a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, motion to adjourn? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you.
One second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you, and.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Spend time with your family during this very special season.
Thank you, Bob.